Welcome, everyone. This is Tuesday, August 4th, and it's the Clatso County Board of Commissioners Work Session. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the Board remains committed to broad community engagement and transparency. And so that's why we're going in the virtual meeting. And those who wish to provide testimony need to register in advance, and we will get to that. The work sessions are, it's 12 o'clock, and we hope that, we have two more commissioners that we hope that will be joining us, Commissioner Webb and Commissioner Quila. Work sessions are an opportunity for Board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board may welcome, are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings, held twice a week monthly, which our next regularly scheduled meeting will be next week. So let's, let's start out with the Board Communication as a, as a means of checking in. We have 10 minutes for this. Commissioner Nebiker, would you like to go?
I don't have anything pertaining to our agenda today, except that I think this is very interesting about the, the school district. And reminds me of something that I dealt with when I was on the Gearheart Planning Commission, but I think it's very interesting. And I liked reading what was done during the 2012 Chair Hootles night. It's all very interesting. I'm looking forward to hearing more about it. And if anybody wants an update on the NBA bubble, I'm happy to do that. But other than that, I don't really have anything. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Thompson, would you like to go next?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, staff had a wonderful community meeting. There were 55 participants on the call to deal with short-term rental transient occupancy issues in the Cove. In addition, and it was an excellent meeting, it was a model of community participation with staff doing contemporaneous recording of community input. It was really splendid. So compliments to staff. Subsequent to that, there have been concerns about fires in the Cove that have been raised significantly because in a time of COVID, when people are sheltering at home, the air pollution is a consideration. We are now in a ban burning season at the coast. And so people having unregulated wildfires is a fire danger to lives and property as well. So I've been dealing with that issue with staff and Oregon Parks and the Department of Forestry's Fire Suppression Unit, Cannon Beach Fire. The county manager said he would be talking to the Fire Defense Board. So we're still looking at public health and safety in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Webb, would you like to go next?
Yes, I have some awfully good news. The Chelsea Gardens project, which was presented to us in a work session before the, before we shut down, has received its requested funding from the state. And so the project is basically a go from here. And I've asked the, the county manager to perhaps work with, with Warrington and with the developers on, on a measured information release about this. But I wanted you all to hear it first. It's very exciting. It can also, it might, we hope, be augmented with the, some funding that is coming down for childcare. It's a big piece of property, and it has lots of wonderful possibilities for community use, gardens and playgrounds and, and all kinds of other wonderful things. And so it's, it's very exciting. It'll be the newest development in Clatso County in many years. So it's very cool. Great information. And I think that's all the good news I've got.
Well, thanks for bringing the good news. We all need good news. Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Quila, would you like to speak now?
You know, I don't have anything. I look forward to hearing more about the Chelsea Gardens and certainly want to hear more about the NBA bubble.
Yes, indeed. So this is Commissioner Sullivan, and I, I don't have anything today. I, I'm looking forward to hearing the staff reports on all of this. So let's go down to the top number one, public health updates. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Nebiker, did you have another comment?
I do. Something that I had forgotten, and perhaps all of you know, already know this, but I just recently learned, I was speaking to someone who's working on some legislation regarding treatment for substance abuse paid for by the excess taxes coming into the state from marijuana sales. $100 million is what I was told they have taken in. And I guess the original legislation, although I haven't read it or reviewed it rather, was they believe that it would be upward, it would be up to 40 million. So that's 60 million more. So this legislation is looking to fund free treatment for people who have addiction problems. So I thought that was really good.
I hope, I don't know if it's in the bill, but I hope that some of that might be included in recovery housing.
Yeah.
That's probably another topic.
This is a person I could talk to, and I, and I'll make a note and ask about this.
Thank you.
Housing, okay. And Mark, if you wanted me little information, you can always ask me.
Are they gonna, you think they're gonna have the season?
Oh, yeah. They're doing, my grandson. Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Oh, nothing. I just, I, it's fascinating to me how they're doing it. So I would love to hear more about, about his experiences. I'm, I'm sure it's just pretty awesome for him.
He, he will see approximately 50 games by the middle of August. And
I can see Mark is very jealous.
Well, he's actually, he's working like 14 to 16 hours a day, so I think he's getting pretty worn out. But he told me something today. They have a snitch line. Wouldn't that be nice? So if there's people that you see that are not being responsible, not wearing their masks, you call this snitch line, and, and someone from security will come and nicely ask whoever that is to please wear their mask.
Wow. Well, I'm, I'm watching The Last Dance on Netflix, which, I don't know, Mark, if you've seen that. It's on the Bulls team, their last season.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I've heard that's really good.
We're missing our sports, aren't we? So, okay, let's move on to the, thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Let's move on to the public health update. We have five minutes for this? Or however long it takes. Who will be giving that report?
I'm seeing if Mike is on the phone. And if he's not, I'll just give a really quick update, and we'll give a more comprehensive one next Wednesday at the regular board meeting.
I'm here.
Mike? Okay, go ahead, Mike, if you want to provide that.
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Mike McNichol, Public Health Director. So we are seeing a rapid number of positive cases. As of today, we're up to 82. Some of them have recovered, the majority of them recovered. We have a bunch of new cases. You've probably have seen the Taco Bell issue, the Yang. We've had some other ones, smaller outbreaks. So just a little update on the Yang. We've had four total out of the 150 some odd cases, our tests we made, we only had four positives, and they did a great job and worked well with us. And Don and I actually put together an op-ed that has been circulated to you for, we wanted to congratulate both Bornstein's and the Yang for their efforts in dealing with their outbreaks and how well they worked with us. So that's come around for you to review. The Taco Bell has been kind of a self-limiting one. They closed, they've recognized that they did a lot of cleaning. And actually, you know, they've been doing a pretty decent job. The case didn't actually start at Taco Bell. It was brought into Taco Bell from an outside issue. So I think we have that one contained as well. As you may have noticed also, that the fellow who died recently, although he was a longtime Clatso County resident, he was recently moved to a long-term memory care facility in Multnomah County and passed away there from COVID. So he did not acquire COVID here. He acquired it there and died there. That's why it's a case from Multnomah County and not for Clatso County. I think, you know, the, the team is still working hard on doing contact tracing for the cases that are not recovered. You know, and those 82 cases are Clatso County cases. But we've had literally dozens of other cases we're doing some work on that are from out of county, Texas, Idaho, Arizona, Ohio, as far away as even, even far like Florida. We've had cases that have come here on vacation. They've gotten sick, they got tested. And in some cases, we were able to make sure that they quarantined 14 days. Other way, other times, we were unable to make them stay, but we've done our best we can. And so we are seeing a lot of work that's being done that's not being reported, trying to help these guys, you know, who are tested here, who don't live here, make sure they make the arrangements so when they do, when they are able to leave, that they've been, that we've notified the other county health departments where they're from, and that they've at least done, they've gone through at least quarantine if we can make them. So that's sort of where we're at right now. If I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. McNichol. Anybody have any questions? Okay, it sounds good. And, and, oh, Commissioner Webb, do you have a question?
I do. I'm assuming that these out-of-town visitors, when they test positive here, do we then do the contact tracing for them?
So if they're out of town, we do not, unless they're quarantined here, and then we'll do the contact tracing locally. If they don't stay, and some of them have just gotten in their cars and driven away, we make sure that their health department is the one who does the contact tracing to make them aware of the case.
Okay.
But in the majority of the time, we are doing the contact tracing if they stay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. So Dr. McNichol, then how do we know they're sick? Do they come to an emergency room? Or how is that, how does that rise to the public awareness, to their awareness and ours?
So in the cases that we've had from the out-of-towners, they end up getting sick, having symptoms. They go to urgent care, get tested, and we get the result back showing that they're positive. That's 100% of the cases have done it in that way. And then some of these cases, I can talk about one in particular. It was from a group from Ohio. They were here for work. One fellow came here, he got sick. We tested all those folks, and we had them quarantined for 14 days. Luckily, he was the only one that actually came down with COVID. The others were not. We had a family from Texas who came here, and they probably got the illness on the airplane trip here. We quarantined them there, and one of them became ill, went to the doctor, got tested, and turned out to be COVID. So it's basically, once people start feeling, not feeling well, they report to the local urgent care or the hospital, get tested, and that's how we find out.
And, and if I could ask, do we have a number of those people?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working with my, our nursing staff to see if we can actually get that number to you. So I think that's one of the bigger stories we're finding is that some folks who are coming here are either bringing it with them or they're acquiring it here. And so, you know, the, the travel issue is becoming more and more problematic through the summer. So I plan on getting that information if we can drag it out of our database.
Thank you. I'd be very interested in that because going to Cannon Beach yesterday to pick up my mail, the town is flooded. The neighborhood is flooded with people who, some wear masks, many do not. It's, some people act as though these are normal times. They're not. We're in a pandemic. So I'd be grateful for whatever data you have.
Sure. I will work on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Nebiker?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. I think they're all coming from Portland because I was in Portland all day yesterday. I've never seen such low traffic ever. I mean, since probably for 20, 30 years. And everywhere that I went, people were wearing masks, and they were so respectful. I guess, I, it's very strange. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you, Mike, for all the work that you and your team are doing. Appreciate that. And thank you for writing that. And I'm sure that we can all let you and Don know how we feel about it. So we can get that moving along.
And if you ever have a question that's in between these agendas or in between these meetings, just please go ahead and send me an email or call me or whatever. I'd be happy to answer it.
Thank you. That's great. Okay, so let's move on to number two on our agenda, which is revisionary clauses on Seaside School District property on page three. And we have about 20 minutes for this. And the staff report, would that be Serpa? Will you be giving us the staff report on that? Or Suzanne? You're gonna have to unmute, Serpa. Do you need some help with that? We're not hearing it yet. Teresa, is there anything you can do at Turin?
I just unmuted caller number one. So we, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Excellent. You solved the mystery.
Okay. So we're here to discuss the reversionary clauses on the Seaside School District property, a practice that has been going on for decades when transfers of property to nonprofits or other governments that were taxed for closed properties often included reversionary language. And I gave you a description of what it generally says, that they are to be used for a specific use. In this case, it was public, municipal, and school purposes and for no other purpose. And if it shall not so be used, then it will automatically revert to the county without any act. These reversionary properties, there's five tax lots, and they're often spoken as of the North 40, that the Seaside High School, north end of their track, and all of the baseball field includes in this, in these five tax lots. And you have a map there that I provided. They contain about 7.86 acres and are zoned R1, R2, excuse me, and M1. R2 is medium-density residential, not to exceed 10 dwellings per net acre. And M1 is industrial use that encourages light, manufacturing, and warehousing. So as you know, the Seaside School District building a whole new campus out of the tsunami inundation zone. And I hired Norris and Stevens with a local agent, Larry Popkin, to list these properties. And Mr. Popkin was in contact with the property in 2009, informed of these reversionary clauses that encumber these tax lots. Staff has been informed that the City of Seaside is also interested in these properties for recreational uses. But we additionally discovered in the last couple of weeks, an interesting fact that one of the tax lots actually, after it was deeded to the school district, Clatso County foreclosed on it, the school district accepted the deed with two years of taxes owing and assumed that responsibility to pay those taxes. However, they did not pay. And then in 1961, Clatso County foreclosed on the Union High School District for non-payment of the assumed property taxes. And that is tax lot 4900 on map 61015 BB. This tax lot 4900 is now listed with the city, excuse me, with the school as being for sale as part of the whole complex they are selling. And then additionally, county's property management policy does address reversionary issues in Section D. And what that basically says is that we will try to resolve it in a mutually understandable. Let me read it here to you. "We shall always first attempt to economically resolve the matter by mutual agreement in the spirit of the original conveyance. And then if an agreement is not reached, the county will seek resolution through appropriate judicial means." They are not listing the properties that have a reversionary clause on them. The school district is not, so there is no conflict there. However, we do have to figure out, resolve for the tax lot 4900. The options that we have on these reversionary properties is we can keep them for county purposes, deed them to the city for park or sports field once we know what their wishes are. With a reversion for community or government purpose, we can also put them up for sale at a public auction, or we can lease them to the city for a certain time period for a use of the sports field. I am open for questions if you have any.
Serpa, and I know we're gonna have a lot of questions. Serpa, did, didn't the city come in front of us a year or two ago? Were these the same properties that they were talking about at that time? When they were talking about getting a pub, this is the same property? Okay. Thank you. I saw some hands up. Commissioner Webb?
Yes, I am not clear from the maps which property is 4900. I can't see. And on, on page five, the, the map also, I thought that in your staff report, you said there were five tax lots? Yeah, that one. Yeah.
Okay, so it's this one here, this piece right here.
The rectangle one at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay.
If you look at page five, it's the bottom left-hand property. That is tax lot 4900.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and what was interesting is we were researching the tax law card, which I provided in your packet. And it showed a book and page where we, the county had deeded tax lot 4900 to the school district. However, when reading that legal, that legal description was actually to the property north of tax lot 4900, which is a meets and bounds legal description. Tax lot 4900 comprises of lots and block, certain lots in a block. So that's what led us to then do the research to find out what really happened. And we found then the deed that said that the school district assumed the taxes and would pay them, which they did not, and then thus the foreclosure.
Was, was there a reason that they didn't pay, that they allowed these properties to go into foreclosure? The city, I mean.
I would, I would say that it just got off their radar, and they just forgot to pay them. There was only two years going in, and the next four years weren't assessed to the property. But the foreclosure sale information that we have in our archives indicates that they never paid, and they went ahead and foreclosed.
Wow. I'll, just one more question while I, on the, has the city or the school district, have they expressed any interest in what they would like us to do with these properties?
We have not reached out to them yet. We're seeking your direction first.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nebiker? Commissioner Nebiker, did you want to speak?
Sorry, sorry. What is the size of that lot? And what is the value of the property if it's known?
We really don't have a value for it because when things are non-accessible, we spend most of, the appraisers spend their time appraising properties that actually generate taxes. So we really don't look at these. Generally, it has been a practice to put on the roll the insurance value for the whole school district for that property. So to take this little piece out, we have to have it appraised.
And what is the size of that piece?
Let me look here. It is 0.82 of an acre, so not quite an acre.
Thank you for doing all this research.
Sure.
So, but the, has this school been using this property all this time, even though now it's reverted back to county property?
Yes. Are you talking about 4900 only or the whole North 40?
Well, we're only talking about 4900, right?
We're talking about everything, 4900 and the North 40.
So if I could just maybe provide a little bit more is that 4900 is a piece that is in, there's a conflict with how the school district has been handling that piece through their marketing of the rest of the property. But the rest of it, besides that, is gonna revert back to the county. And then for that, for those pieces, that's where the City of Seaside is interested in obtaining it so that they can continue the recreational purposes that it has been used for. And so, and then that's where we get into whether, whether or not that is something that the Board would be interested in pursuing to allow the city to basically continue in its current use and have a reversionary clause that if it isn't used for that purpose, that it would revert back to the county again. And then we have some work to do with the 4900, just to clarify what the school district is gonna be doing with that property and what the remedy is. So is that correct, Serpa?
Yes, that is exactly it.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. Well, I imagine that they'll be really surprised to learn of Serpa's discovery and no doubt concerned. I'm reminded when the earthquake engineers had the conference and talked about what'll happen in Seaside when there's a tsunami, the, the recommendation was that it be a big park fundamentally. And so to the extent that we can support the school district and the City of Seaside in maximizing the use when possible and reducing risk to lives and safety in some eventuality or certainty, however a person wants to speak about, it makes sense that we support that. or certainty, however a person wants to speak about, it makes sense that we support that. Even though we might be able to get some money from somebody, it makes sense to me that we allow them to use it for recreational purposes and still maintain the reversionary clause so that we have both flexibility and accountability and do it in a humane way and a safe way. And that's what occurs to me right now. Does anybody, I don't know if anybody else has a different opinion, but I'm curious about what my colleagues think about that.
Commissioner Nebiker?
I agree with you, Commissioner Thompson. I think that recreation use is beneficial for the community. I, I'm not so sure that I, this, this small parcel, smaller parcel, I think that the county is owed something for this. I'm not, I'm not so willing to just throw that in without some compensation myself. That's the way I see it. But, yeah, I'm open.
Commissioner, any, Commissioner Webb, Commissioner Quila, do you have any input on this? Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Thompson. It seems to me, but I also agree with Commissioner Nebiker, that it would be nice to reconcile this debt that the, that obviously Seaside or the school district still owes us. And if we could clear that up, I think we should just try to do that as anyway, as a matter of course, if they owe us this money. And, but, at the same time, I am, it appears from the marketing materials that the district has, has put forward that they, what they're looking for on this land is affordable housing. And I'm wondering, I assume that the M-one, the zoned M-one is the north extent of this land area? That looks, nothing is marked with zoning, I don't think, I'm sorry. I don't think I could find, yeah. The zoning is not marked in the marketing materials, but I'm assuming that that's the M-one, is the northern, it's almost a triangle where twenty-fourth comes into Roosevelt. And I'm assuming that, you know, an M-one would allow something pretty industrial to be placed there. And would that be an appropriate use next to what, what looks to me like it would be a park area if that's what the city wanted to do? Am I wrong about that? Am I? Where is the M, Surpa, where is the M-one property?
It, it, can you hear me?
Yeah.
It is in the north, it is in the area that you described. That is correct.
Okay, all right. But, but I think most of all, I'd like to hear from the school district in the city of Seaside. I'd love to hear what, what their want would be from this.
This was all, excuse me, this was all the Seaside campus, that's my understanding, right? This was, this was the school district before, before the move, the current one? And so, the uses have been in place for a long time. With the, with the new campus, will they have an athletic field with their new campus? Yes? Okay. Well, I, I also had a question about the housing too, but I, I'm very keen on having this maintained as a recreational thing. As in terms of what they may owe us, this is the fact that we have taken the land back. What does that do with, in terms of who owes what? That was back in the fifties, wasn't it?
It was back in the sixties.
Sixties? I mean, I don't, I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if there's, I don't know how that, how that would work.
What I would say, Chair, is that we'll certainly reach out to the school district and talk about that piece. And then if the board is inclined to, to at least consider the Act Forty as a, as a continuation of its current use, which is for recreational purposes, we can schedule a time for the city to actually come in and present what their vision is for the development and for the use of the recreational sites. We wanted to have this conversation before, that we invited them in, just to make sure you were supportive of that general direction, so.
I would be supportive. Commissioner Quila?
Yeah, I certainly would be supportive. I mean, I guess this is just the discovery phase and we're just learning of this and give them an opportunity to be informed and sit down with them. I think that that's reasonable.
Thank you. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yes, I too would like to hear what they have to say, but I, I do believe that this should be held as for public use for recreation. And not, as much as I, I don't know anything about them wanting to sell it for affordable housing, and as much as I support affordable housing, I think it should remain for public use as it was intended.
Yeah, so I think that the, the public housing piece or just the housing piece is on the property that is where the school is now. This, this Act Forty property, which would revert back to the county, is where the recreational fields are, so.
Oh, okay.
Just to make that clear, the Act Forty is where the recreational fields are. That's the property that, that would revert to the county for the continued recreational use. And then it's where the school is now, is the property that they're marketing for, for really housing or for other appropriately zoned uses.
Okay, thank you.
But it's a school district, the, the school building itself is part of the school district, isn't that correct?
And they are selling that property.
Okay, so that is theirs to do with as they see fit, but we have nothing to do with? Okay, thank you.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, well, very good. It sounds like we have a piece to move forward with and we're just under a minute over, so let's, thank you, staff, for all your work on that. It was interesting to read that. So, let's go on to.
Thank you, Surpa.
Thank you, Surpa, yes.
Thank you, Surpa.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go to number three, Code Consolidation Project, on page thirty-seven. And we also have about twenty minutes for this.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Gail Hunterstein, Community Development Director.
Thank you.
Hi. As staff, we've been working on this project for a little over two years right now. I wanted to take the opportunity this afternoon to give you a little bit of background, explain what it is that we're attempting to do by consolidating the codes, and then to get your input about how you want to proceed with reviewing this when it comes to an ordinance form. So, just briefly, why, why are we here right now? Why do we have two codes? We have a zoning code and we have a document that contains the standards that we use to guide development, so things like parking standards, sign regulations, those types of regulations. Both of those documents were adopted in nineteen eighty and they've been amended over the years, but they've continued to remain two separate documents. So, historically, the reason you had a separate standards document was to keep those parking regulations and other types of standards separate from the zoning code. And Lu, Lu by the Land Use Board of Appeals would usually defer to the jurisdictions and let them have discretion on setting their own standards for development. Here in the county, when we look at the five cities and the unincorporated counties, the incorporated areas have combined their zoning regulations and their development standards into one document. There are still a few exceptions. Seaside has kept its fine ordinance separate. Deerheart's kept its subdivision ordinance separate. But for the most part, all of those standards and those zoning regulations have been incorporated into one document. So, what does that mean when we have two documents? So how does it affect people in unincorporated counties? So, I will tell you from a staff viewpoint, it's painful. And I'm sure that the people who work on the development side, the real estate side, even residents, property owners who come in and want to do something with their properties, they are having to look through two separate documents. Sometimes you've got information on both topics, or one topic listed in both documents, so you're having to flip back and forth between two big volumes. Sometimes some of the information may be outdated, the cross-references or cross-citations may be incorrect. And we have this extremely unique numbering system here in the county where the zoning code gets an L in front of it and a section number, and then the standards document has the letter S as in standards and the section number. And sometimes the two numbers are the same. So, for example, if you have L-one-point-oh-three-oh, that's from our zoning code and that's the definition. But S-one-point-oh-three-oh has something to do with lot sizes and that's in the standards document. And it can cause a lot of confusion and it's a very odd numbering system. I've never seen anything like it previously. So, we undertook it staff, just to combine the two documents, eliminate as much confusion as possible, and try to create a document that's more user-friendly. We did not look at this point to do any changes to regulations, to add regulations, delete regulations, put in anything new. It was simply to combine the two documents. So, we started this process officially with the Planning Commission back in August of twenty-eighteen. And over the course of basically a year and a half, took them, in sections, the combined codes, so that they could review those. It was in June of this year that they did vote five to zero to make a recommendation that the Board of Commissioners approve the combined document, which we would be naming the Land and Water Developmental Use Code. So, again, just to emphasize, what is this consolidation really meant to do? And obviously, it combines the two codes. We're trying to standardize our language and terminology throughout the two documents as much as possible so that when you see something in one zoning district, the same terminology is used in all the zoning districts that follow it. Where we had outdated references and terminology, we tried to modernize those phrases and words. We tried to combine topics so that everything can be found in one place. If you're looking for information on geologic hazards, you don't have to go to one section and then to another, all combined now into one section of its own. We, again, just tried to add to the user-friendliness by creating tables and including illustrations whenever it was appropriate to help explain concepts or clarify what is permitted in zoning districts. And it'll, you'll be able now to look across several zoning districts and say you're looking for where you can put a dog kennel. So that will make it much easier for you, whereas now we'd have to go through all forty zoning districts one at a time and look for it in an unalphabetized list. So, just simple things, but hopefully things that will make the code a little bit easier to use. What the Code Consolidation Project does not do, as I stated earlier, is revise any existing regulations or add new regulations. It also, it's not going to be perfect. I will warn you upfront that going through and combining five-hundred-and-ninety-six pages of code, we will have missed some code citations and updates somewhere. So, we would expect that probably about six months, once after the code's adopted, then as we encounter those errors and things that didn't get updated, then we would bring a cleanup ordinance, ordinance back to you. So that's the summary, and I can stop there at that point if you have some questions for me, but I also have some questions for you.
Okay, thank you, Gail. I have, I have one question. First, first of all, I would like to congratulate you and your team for this amazing amount of work. I, when I, when I was going through it, it seems like there's just some really, you know, from a writer's point of view, there's some really beautiful editing that's done in the way that you're changing the phrases and stuff, it makes more sense. And it sounds like there's also gonna be an index, correct, where they can look up things? I, I'm, I'm very enthusiastic about this work, but I'd like to open up to the commissioners, but I also want to remind people, maybe we should start out, why don't we start out, Gail, with your questions for us? And then, then we'll go from there, okay?
Okay. So, I guess the, the first question is, this is gonna be, as I stated, about five-hundred-and-ninety-six pages worth of code documents. And that's the cleaned-up version of it. So, I guess the first question I have would be, as the board reviews this in ordinance form, are you looking, or would you prefer a summary of changes similar to what was included in today's packet, or do you want a full copy of all the changes? And then if you want a full copy, do you want it paper or electronic? Do you want a strike-through, underlined version that shows you what has changed? And I will warn you, it will be very confusing. Joanna can talk about her experience looking at that document. But just really how you would like it presented to you that would make the most sense and make it the easiest for you to review and digest.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Let's go around, just go around and start with what people's preferences are. Mark, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Quila, do you have a preference on that?
I, I would prefer a summary, myself.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Webb?
I would prefer, can I say one thing first? On behalf of every planner who practices in Clatsop County, I would like to say, thank you! This, this, this is just wonderful. I, I mean, and the kind of staff work that goes into this is unbelievable. And so it's, and so kudos, as always, to the staff and to the Planning Commission. This has been, I'll bet, really real drudgery for them. I would rather have the total package. I would rather have a, a copy of the new ordinance that you're proposing, because I would.
Commissioner Webb, would you like that? Commissioner Webb, would, would the total thing be okay in electronic form?
Yes, I think it would. I think it would, because it's, the structure is what I would, that's always what I look at first in the code.
Okay, thank you.
And so I think, I think that would be fine. But, but I did find the sections that we were given today to be very useful. So, I think given what we've been, what we have today and a full electronic copy of the ordinance would be, would be my, the direction that I'd like to head in.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, this is where COVID makes my life complicated. It's really, it's painful for me to read things electronically, especially six-hundred pages. Ordinarily, I'd say, well, just put a copy out in the commissioner's office and I'll come up and flip through it, because then I can adjust where it is according to my eyes. I don't know how to, I can't do that now. It isn't, it isn't safe practice. I need, I need hard copy to be able to do it. I can either trust that you are doing everything perfectly, or that you have followed every bit of input you've had from planning commissioners and my colleagues on the County Board of Commissioners. So, I'm really not clear right now. I appreciate your assurance that nothing has been changed. One of the concerns I've had about the, about the revision of the comp plan is that I've seen my neighbors want to put their whim or their personal preference into code instead of looking at what the law has to say about what are the acceptable boundaries. So, I'm, I'm really of two minds. So I'm, I'm really of, uh, two minds about this right now. And, um, if I were to have to make a choice, I'd say, "I need hard copy and I need it in front of me so I can look at everything."
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yeah, I, um, I support and trust the planning commission and, uh, Director Hendrickson. I am okay with a summary.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Nebiker.
Thank you for all this work. This is tedious.
Um, I, I, I'm okay with a summary too, so, uh, but it sounds like there's room that we could do, um, to help the other two commissioners out. Uh, Gail, do you have another question for us?
Uh, no, that was everything. Thank you.
And does, is the feedback that we gave you, is that helpful?
Uh, it was helpful for me. I don't know if the county manager had any additional questions or, um, county council, but, uh, thank you and staff thanks you very much.
So, Gail, I'm sorry, go ahead, um, county manager.
No, I was just gonna, you know, thank Gail for her leadership and for all of her staff work and, um, I am fine. I think we have enough direction and we will certainly, um, give each of the commissioners what they need, so.
And, um, Gail, um, is what this ongoing work is, um, when do you anticipate having the, the one, uh, the two join together?
Um, they're joined together now. County Council has been reviewing them and, uh, once she's completed her review, then it would be scheduled through the county manager for one of your regular meetings. And it'll go through two hearings.
Okay, thank you very much. So that's, that's something that has to come in front of us, the, the board, um, and then the board would approve it and then that would be, that would be the, the standard going forward. Is that correct? Okay, very good. And once again, thank you for all your hard work on this.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, so now, um, do we have any other comments on the regular agenda for this work session? Okay, we are now, um, we have two, uh, executive sessions coming up. Um, unfortunately, I do not have, uh, I guess I have what I have on the agenda to read. I don't have a, a, um, script. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna have two executive sessions and, uh, the first one, um, so.